We'll call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, July 18th, 2024. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Platt, sit there, please go to the room.
Commissioner Knoblock?
Here.
Commissioner No?
Here.
Commissioner Heikle?
Here.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki?
Here.
Commissioner Geisler?
Here.
Chair Schwartz?
Here.
All right, our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Casey, any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of our June 20th, 24 meeting.
Chair Schwartz?
Commissioner Knoblock?
I propose for, propose for approval of minutes from the 6:20 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Knoblock, second by No, any corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and the minutes are approved. Our first order of business this evening is a request to postpone planning cases 24-14 and 24-15, the site plan and preliminary plat for the September Center Architecture LLC at 10701 Butternut Street Northwest. Mr. Platt, sir.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz, members of the Planning Commission. So, staff are proposing to postpone this item again. The City Council is planned to make a decision on the rezoning at the upcoming meeting on the 23rd of July, but that decision will be needed before the Planning Commission can make a recommendation on the site plan and preliminary plat for this item. So, staff are once again requesting that the Planning Commission postpone the hearing for the site plan and preliminary plat until the August Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? All right, the public hearing is continued open from last month, and we'll just continue it to the August meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
In planning case, can I, I'll make a motion then?
Yep.
In planning, planning case 24-14, I move that we postpone consideration of the proposed site plan and continue the public hearing until the August 15th, 2024 meeting.
Chair Schwartz?
Commissioner Knoblock?
Can I just make a point? Are we sure that there's no one here? The public meeting's still open, is there anyone here to speak on it?
Well, we're just not going to take any comment anyway.
Oh, okay. Just wanted to clarify. I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to postpone planning case 24-14. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Knoblock.
Uh.
Or, uh, Geisler, I'm sorry.
Would, would the motion and the second accept a friendly amendment to include planning case 24-15 as well into this motion, to do both at once?
Mr. Casey?
Can we do both at once? Okay, then I will amend my motion to include planning case 24-15, I move that we postpone making a recommendation on the preliminary plat and continue the public hearing until the August 15th, 2024 meeting.
I second, second it.
All right, so we have motion and second on both cases then. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that case is continued.
Thank you.
Our next case is planning cases 24-12 and 24-13, a site plan and conditional use permit for a new industrial building at 2955 Holly Street Northwest. Mr. Behringer.
9255.
9255.
Yeah.
Commissioner Behringer?
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, we've got some updates here from the last meeting. Just to recap where we're at, the Commission requested that the applicant return with some revisions. First, to the site plan, we wanted to see four of the conditions of approval addressed here, including outdoor seating areas, trash receptacles, bike rack, the sidewalk along Holly, trash enclosure and location, and then rooftop mechanical and screening, as well as some updates to the elevation with some facade improvements. So, we'll first jump into the site plan, what's been improved there. We have three of the four conditions added now to the site plan, have highlighted those in yellow. We now see our six-foot sidewalk along Holly, the trash enclosure is on the northwest corner of the building, and then we see our details for our rooftop mechanical screening. So, the missing piece, that those outdoor seating areas, trash receptacles and bike rack, we are going to keep those as a condition of approval. Moving on to our facade improvements, so this is our southeast elevation we're looking at first. I've got the original on top with updated on the bottom. This is the view from Springbrook Drive. We've got six windows that have been added to the lower level, and this was the same as last time, but the applicant wanted to emphasize the 27 evergreen trees that will be partially screening the view from, from Springbrook there, that's the lowest image on the screen. And that view, we kind of talked about what this would look like from the street, so this is an image from Google. We've got our existing Fresenius building there in the forefront, around 26 feet tall, set back around 50 feet from Springbrook, and the proposed new warehouse will be a little taller, 35 feet, eight inches, and set back about a football length of, away from Springbrook, about 300 feet. Other facade improvements includes the southwest elevation. As a reminder, this is the one facing Holly Street with our loading docks. We've got three double windows that have been added to the upper level as requested, and here we see on the bottom that trash enclosure on that north corner of the wall. The two other facades remain unchanged from the first round, the northeast and the, and the northwest elevation. I also wanted to point out, as discussed last time, what the view from Coon Rapids Boulevard will be of the proposed building. We've got a couple windows of sight through the QuickTrip highlighted here with the yellow circles, and the warehouse will be even further from Coon Rapids Boulevard at 350 feet. So, along with that, I wanted to also read an updated narrative from the applicant, reasonings for these different updates, so I'll scroll back to a couple slides here. The southeast elevation is screened from view by significant evergreen landscaping across all but the ends of that facade, therefore, the addition of 30% stone veneer does not enhance the view of that side of the building because it is shielded from view. We have added reflective windows across the lower part of the elevation to break up the area below the mid-stripe. Moving forward to our northeast elevation on top here, the stone on the northeast side we estimate to be around 10% of the required area. We ask that consideration be given to the large number of windows along that elevation, along with the entrance doors. We don't feel that the addition of more stone adds much of anything to the appearance of the elevation. Also, the applicant is asking us to keep in mind that this is a warehouse and permitted use in the district with a conditional use permit. The stone veneer requirements are primarily for the appearance enhancements of retail and office uses, not so much warehouse. The use of the pebbled panels, reflective windows, and contrasting panel colors is in keeping with the spirit of maintaining a clean and attractive appearance without making the cost prohibitive, as we, we as owners are not going to be able to recover such increased costs through higher rents or building value. And then finally, they wanted to add currently, there is general market demand for warehouse space over office and retail. Warehouse, like the one proposed, needs two stories of height to function as opposed to an office or retail, and if we just look at the first floor here of the building on the northeast elevation, they're covering around 25% of the facade with stone. With that, that is all the updates we have at this time, can open it up to any discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Behringer. Commissioner, any questions at this time from Mr. Behringer?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki?
So, just a quick question, so do we agree with that statement with regard to the stone and the difference between commercial and for a warehouse? The fact that it is a warehouse, not a commercial building, that we would be more lenient on the stone ratio requirements?
Commissioner, yes, staff does agree with that assessment by the, by the applicant. Those aesthetic treatments are typically used to treat the office and, and retail spaces, this being a warehouse, we can see an argument for some leniency there.
Okay, and staff, I assume you're in agreement with the modifications that they have made to try and compensate for some of that?
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
Nice. As far as all the flexibilities that are coming here, because obviously that goes to council as well for consideration, and with what we saw with IDC and their requests on that, does staff feel confident that this will get all the way through council as it sits as well, given the, you know, the site, we, the other things we discussed is the side of the building, the driveway with, there's, there's a lot of pieces here that are being asked for besides just the aesthetics?
Yeah. Commissioner, I believe we do. I could pass it to my coworker here, as he's more familiar with the IDC project.
Chair Schwartz, if I may, there, there are some differences between this site and the IDC automatic site that I think that kind of set it apart and, and give it different considerations. I think one of the primary issues that the council had with the IDC automatic site was the fact that it was right on Coon Rapids Boulevard and very, very visible for motorists driving on Coon Rapids Boulevard, where I think this site is set back in such a way where I think it's, it's kind of a different consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, any other questions at this time?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock?
I just want to commend the Planning Commission because it's a diff, this is a difficult application, but Planner Behringer and Planner Patzner, you need an A plate, I'm terrible with names. No, the whole planning department has, has really worked considerably well in this situation, and all the due diligence and the work that's been done and working with the applicant. I think this is a wonderful proposal, a plan that we can vote on, so thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heikle?
I agree with Commissioner Knoblock, and I do also commend the petitioner for working with us and making the changes. I don't have any problems with the brick issue at all, and I would support it.
All right, is there anything the petitioner would like to add at this time?
Well, I just wanted to thank you.
Go to the microphone and give your name and address for the record, please.
I just want to add, it's been, this is my fourth or fifth time before the Planning Commission, I think we're the ones that built the new Fresenius clinic across the street, and we worked with the Planning Commission on that as well as the City Council, and this, I, I know this district here is zoned something differently from what we're asking, and we really appreciate the way the staff has worked with us to get to this point. It's been, and we have development in other, other cities, and this is by far the most reasonable one that we've dealt with, so we, I just want to say we appreciate your help on this, and, and hopefully, we'll, what we've approved, what we've proposed here can be approved, can be approved and moved to the council. We're excited about the project.
One question I have for you, sir, I still have questions on the improved, or the added width of the driveways. Other businesses seem to have no problem with their semis meeting or getting in and out with the 50-foot width driveways. Why do you feel your trucks would not be able to?
We're, we're on this driveway here?
Both of them are over. What's, uh?
Yeah, both of them, because technically their maximum width is 30, and you're asking for 85 and 65.
Is there any reason why I, I don't know, that's just the width, that's what our architects gave us. I, I think they, they, I'm going to guess, but I think they did that because there's not a lot of room along the docks for them to swing, so they want to swing wide and be able to come in and then back in.
Looking at the site plan, sure looks like there's an awful lot of space between the island and even the extension of the trucks in the diagrams that are shown, that I, I don't understand why a semi-driver wouldn't be able to make those turns.
They're at 80 feet right now?
One's at 85 and one's at 65.
I guess I don't know the answer to that, other than that's what the architects felt the building is going to need, the way it's been designed. I, I don't know.
All right, I guess we'll leave it for Commissioner to have further discussion. Thank you. Any other questions possibly for the petitioner at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner No?
I just have maybe even a statement on your, in your narrative. You talk about having that screening to where you wouldn't be able to see the stone facade, and then we talk about adding windows beneath that center line, which I assume won't be able to be seen too. So, with that, it feels a little contradictory to me, and also, you know, we talk about a demand for warehouse space on the second page of the narrative, but I go back and we talk about the owners are not going to be able to recoup their, their increased costs, so it's kind of seen some contradictory conversation within your narrative.
Being the contradiction between?
Well, we, we have screenings, so we won't be able to see the stone, but then we're going to put in six new windows where the screening, you're not going to be able to see the windows, right? That's one.
Well, the only reason I, the reason we did that was that I thought the Commission wanted to have stone on that side. We offered that as, as a compromise to break up that facade. We still, we don't feel really anything's necessary there, but willing to put in windows to break up just that monolithic facade on that, on that first level.
Sure. Sure, no, it makes sense, it's just as you read it, it just feels contradictory in those two spots to me.
Sure, no, I understand, yeah. But I think that what we're trying to do is avoid the expense of stone. That, that's what we're trying to do.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Commissioner, any other questions for petitioner at this time? All right, we may have more later.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we do need to reopen the public hearing on this matter, so at this time I will reopen the public hearing on planning cases 24-12 and 24-13, the site plan and conditional use permit for the new industrial building at 2955 Holly Street Northwest. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and limit comments to the Commission. Commissioner, your thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki?
So, I, I do want to talk a little bit about all the different concessions, I think, especially around the appearance and even the driveway and so forth, there's a number of things that, that we are granting in this request that I think it's considerably a bit, right? And I, I guess what I'm trying to balance, or what I am balancing, is that I do understand what the intent or the purpose of this building is. I understand how it's going to be used, and I understand that, you know, because of that, in the location that maybe it would, it would just easily fit into where it's more industrial and so forth, we wouldn't even have these questions, but because it is in this area where you, you know, you built a Fresenius next to it, it looks beautiful, we've got restaurants across the street the other direction, I think that we do have to keep in mind that this isn't an industrial area, and so we want to make sure that the appearance of it is, you know, is up to par with what we expect for that area. I appreciate what the applicant has done to, you know, to propose the changes and, you know, even putting the windows on the building, even though they're going to then be kind of covered up with, with trees, you know, it shows effort and, and so forth. It's, you know, I think it's a wonderful building, I don't have any objections to it. I'm hoping that this is a good, a good place for it, considering the other businesses around that area, that we're not making a mistake here in introducing the semi-traffic into that spot, right, with the additional size of the, of the driveway entrance and so forth, and I think all those things are the things that, why we're sitting here asking these questions, because I, I get the sense that there's just a little bit of a doubt as to whether or not this is truly the right decision. I'll support it, right, but I, you know, it is a recommendation to the City Council, and they'll have the final say, but I do hope that the City Council takes these things into consideration too, and I'm going to lean on them for their guidance as well and for the, or the staff as well, but.
Thank you.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock?
I just want to clarify that what we're talking about, the subject property is classified as commercial mixed use? Or the zoning is port, Evergreen River Rapids overlay, but it's of course undeveloped, but it's, the comprehensive plan says commercial mixed use, is that accurate?
Commissioner, yes, that is accurate.
Okay, good, I just want to clarify that, because that is the intended use, because that area, I would say, and from my driving and being in that area, I would say half the buildings in that area are manufacturing or warehouse or industrial, so I think it'll, if it proceeds through City Council, I think it'll be the prettiest built warehouse building in the area. That's it?
Commissioner, what, so you want to have any thoughts on the driveway issue? I'm not aware of any other businesses that we have here within the city where we've allowed such wide driveways.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki?
What would be the downside if you, if you could help me with having them that width? I feel like the engineers designed it that way probably for good reason, and absent any sort of, you know, write-up from them, more response from them, maybe Max has an idea here, I feel like it, it's necessary to keep that 80, unless you can help me understand why.
I'm just afraid that we possibly might be setting a precedent, increasing the size of driveways throughout the remainder of businesses throughout the city. Like I said, to my knowledge, I'm not aware of any other businesses that have asked for or received such wide variances on their driveways.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may continue, I guess, looking at the diagram that Max put on the screen for us, I guess the, it seems to me like there is reason for that, that wide turn, if you look at how they're angling in, it seems like that wide turn might be necessary for them to make the start, and again, I can, without any write-up from the engineers, I'm not an expert on it, but the drawings suggest that the space is needed.
But at the same time, the semis could be, could come in from Holly, which would be at the top of this map, come down and pull in without having to make a U-turn around that island. And Holly is a signalized intersection just as well as Springbrook Drive.
Mr. Chair, I think they are coming in on Holly Street. They come in on Holly.
Excuse me, I meant, was it 93rd, 93rd Avenue up on, off of Coon Rapids Boulevard?
I don't think there's any discussion of that. It looks to me like the intent is come in off of Holly Street, that they pull in and back into the slips.
Chair Schwartz?
Commissioner Knoblock?
I'll back up Commissioner Schmalki. I've worked for two corporate trucking firms in North America, one in Canada, one in the United States, and you get used to seeing a lot of curbs that are damaged, because no matter how good the drivers are, a lot of curbs are destroyed with the heavy equipment and with repetition. It's also a safety thing, in my opinion, so I think it's a very good design in more trucking locations should have wider driveways, just from my perspective and experience, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey?
Yeah, I will, I would agree with Commissioner Schmalki and Commissioner Knoblock in that it's, if the architects have determined that this is what's needed for these 53-foot trailers to get in there, plus the cab, then I'm, I'm willing to go with that, defer to the council if they have other thoughts on it, but this seems to make sense to me.
Well, in respect to that, I, looking at the diagram here, it's possible I could give concession to the westmost driveway, which would, I guess, be considered the entrance driveway, would need to be wider to allow for the U-turn, but pulling out of the eastern driveway, I see no reason why that one needs to be widened.
Again, if the architects have submitted this, it goes above my pay grade to think otherwise, I guess, I don't know if it depends on which slot those trucks are in, but it's above my pay grade, but I'm, I'm good with the, the wider driveways for the reasons we've talked about.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler?
So, I actually agree with the sense of what actual traffic flow will be here. I don't think trucks will be coming from Springbrook to Holly to this site. Turning, coming, coming down onto Springbrook and then turning right onto Holly is, is kind of a tighter turn. My guess is they'll likely use 93rd to Holly, which would then make them southbound on Holly, which would then be kind of a left turn into this site and then backing in, and then would likely be taking a U-turn to go back from Holly to 93rd to then back to the Boulevard, simply because turning left onto Springbrook isn't going to happen. If anybody's driven on Springbrook, it's a busy, busy road. My assumption is most of the trucking traffic will use 93rd to get to the Boulevard. That being said, you know, I, I think the wider curb lanes, if, if that's what we need to get these turning diameters here, the fact that it's dimensional flexibility means it's just about this specific site, it isn't a percept, there isn't a precedent anywhere else, it isn't, we don't have to grant it anywhere else, it is just about meeting the specific site conditions at this site, so I don't, I don't worry about that part of it. The one question I have, though, is that, you know, 85 feet is a really big crosswalk that is, since we have our six-foot sidewalk there, so we're going to, we're going to need to make sure that those are clearly striped as part of that sidewalk to make it clear of like, hey, pedestrians could be here for trucking traffic, which trucks and pedestrians usually don't see each other too often, but, so that, that's my bigger consideration of how big these driveways are, but at the end of the day, I, I think almost all the traffic is going to be flowing from 93rd, not Springbrook, and so I, out of all of the things that are on here, it's asking a lot, but it's a trucking site, and the building's pretty tight, you know, if the building was smaller, you'd have more turning radius inside. You know, if the building was smaller, you'd have more turning radius inside the, inside the location, which would then mean you wouldn't need as big of driveways, which would then mean, so as, as I discussed at the last meeting, the, the site conditions requiring the driveway are because of the size of the building. And we're granting flexibility to give a bigger building. And that is also in conjunction with the FAR, which, you know, the, the exterior facade comments about, well, if this is a one-story building, the FAR, trying to achieve a point-six FAR is actually a two-story minimum requirement if you want to start getting to the math, is what we wanted was a two-story office building with a bunch of stone and glass. That's what the Port District was asking for. I agree that this is a transitional property to the industrial spaces. So at some point, there's a line, it's either at this property or at this property's edge of where it shifts from commercial to industrial. I think the applicant has done quite a bit to bring it closer to what we had originally asked for. My main concern last meeting, and I was the one who asked for it to be tabled, was that there was a lot of things that we were looking for in conditions that should have been on the site plan so that we could consider them. To the point about the glass behind the evergreens, I, I appreciate the evergreen screening. I think that's good. However, I don't, a lot of times, especially on industrial properties, that kind of screening doesn't persist overly. So adding the windows, I think, gives us a guarantee that there will be some facade breakup there, whether it's through greenery or through the construction of the building. So I actually feel like they got there and doubled down on it is better than not. So at, at the end of the day, I, I'm okay with where, where we're at here, but there is a lot of flexibility being asked and that is a lot to ask for the council to consider all at once. I think the building's too big for the lot, for what they're trying to do, and that would solve a huge chunk of the asks that are coming. But this is the plan in front of us, and I think at the end of the day, they've met pretty far, so I'm, I'm okay with as it sits right now.
Would you then possibly request a sixth condition? I believe it would be sixth.
Sixth for, for which, for site plan or conditional use?
An eighth condition, I'm sorry. An eighth condition that the sidewalks be, be striped?
I, I guess my, maybe a question back to staff on that. Is that just not on the packet materials that we had and that would be planned in there? Or is that not expected to have a crosswalk striped in the driveways or even to the applicant?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I believe the engineering comments on this included a request for turning templates on those driveway access. So that will tell you what's needed for large vehicles. I think we can adjust those widths based upon getting those turning templates shown on this. I would agree with you, eighty-five feet is a large amount. I mean, that's like Hanson Boulevard. That, that's pretty significant. I, I don't think that's necessary, and I think that engineering comment to get those turning templates, we can adjust that width based upon what we find and what's necessary. And I think we could either handle that. I'm not sure if it's a condition or just part of the building permit review, but I, I would agree eighty-five feet is rather excessive.
And as far as the striping of the sidewalks?
That's not something we typically do. I, I think we could do the, the curb returns just so the sidewalk, or they're dropped so it's more of a pedestrian way. But striping of a sidewalk through a driveway, striping only lasts for so long, then it's gonna become an issue of, are we enforcing this striping? Are we setting a precedence on something like that? That's not something typically that's done across the driveway access. I would say if it's eighty-five feet wide, maybe that's a special consideration, but I just don't see any reason why it needs to be eighty-five feet wide, to be honest with you.
Then I would, would ask staff, is, is it not normal that we would receive those turning radius templates or information prior to the case coming forward?
Mr. Chair, it's a condition, I guess. It's, it's a comment. It's something that is gonna have to be resolved prior to it making it through any sort of a building permit. That isn't anything substantial enough that I would say necessitates a tabling of the consideration or something else. That's, that's a minor detail, in my opinion, solely my opinion. But for me, I think that's something that gets cleaned up as part of the building permit review. I, I think the record will show there's been some discussion and some concern about that. We've noted it in our engineering comments, and whatever is necessary, I think, is what should be allowed, but I can't imagine eighty-five feet is gonna be necessary. As I said, that's two cars in each direction and wide shoulders. Eighty-five feet is a large road section.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioner, any other thoughts, concerns?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
I'll make a motion in planning case twenty-four dash twelve to recommend approval of the proposed site plan with the following conditions: that all engineering comments be addressed, all sustainability comments be considered, the applicant enters into a site security agreement with the city, all signage is subject to separate sign permits, outdoor seating areas, trash receptacles near the main entrance, and a bike rack be added to the site plan, the corresponding conditional use permit be approved, and corresponding Coon Creek watershed district permits be approved. Do I, do I need to include the paragraph below? I just, in terms of the recommends approval of the dimensional flexibility as well as that part of this, would I, of that same motion? Okay, I'll add that in then, too, is the, the comments regarding the recommends approval of dimensional flexibility for max setback floor area ratio, max building area, and max driveway width, and of design flexibility for exterior building materials, building orientation, and transparent front facade. The planning commission finds the modifications necessary to respond to site conditions result in better integration of uses and further the intent of the Port District.
Second. Motion by Schmalki and second by Haikola. And Commissioner Schmalki, is your motion just for planning case twenty-four dash twelve?
Correct, since it's a recommendation for approval and thirteen is an approval, I, I chose to split it up.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion on this first motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I'll just reiterate my comment. This is a lot of flexibility, I think the most flexibility I've seen since I've sat on this board. So I, I think the, I would expect this to maybe not be super smooth, but we'll see what the council decides.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed. And that motion carries. And that's a recommendation by the planning commission and decision will be made by the city council at their August fifth meeting. Next, we have the junior motion on the conditional use permit.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
In planning case twenty-four dash thirteen, I approve, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for an office warehouse based on the findings stated in our packet.
Second. Motion by Schmalki, second by Geisler. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that motion carries. This is a decision by the planning commission and can be appealed within ten business days if someone so chooses. Thank you. Good luck. All right, our next case is planning case, or request to withdraw planning cases twenty-four dash sixteen and twenty-four dash seventeen preliminary plat and site plan for Hidden Creek Woods, second edition. Mr. Platsner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I'm gonna have two of these tonight. We had two applicants withdraw their applications after public hearing notices were already sent out. So these were public hearings, applications have been withdrawn, and this applies to this one and the next one. I'll, I'll discuss that one when the time comes. But, so, because the application's withdrawn, there's nothing to hear comment on for public hearing. Just a quick rundown of why the application was withdrawn. So this was brought forward as a public hearing in the, at the June twentieth Planning Commission meeting. Hidden Creek Woods, second edition, a twenty-unit townhome development proposal at Zeon Boulevard. And the applicant is having issues with the FEMA floodway that runs through the site and is working with the DNR to resolve the flood zone issue, whether this requires the applicant to change around their site plan or whether the flood zone lines might be redrawn, which is a possibility, considering that the FEMA flood map and the DNR flood map, in short, don't necessarily completely match up, so there might be some changes that can be made. But this is a, you know, time-consuming issue, and it is taking longer than the applicant has originally hoped. So they are withdrawing their application and then proposing to bring it forward at a later date. So with that, the planning commission does just need to accept the withdrawal of preliminary plat and of the site plan applications. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Bucicconi? The fact that we opened planning or a public hearing and continued, we don't have to do anything with that if these cases are withdrawn?
Right. I view the applicant withdrawing their application formally as we're just letting the public know this isn't gonna happen today.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Noem. Go ahead.
In planning case twenty-four sixteen and twenty-four seventeen, I move that we accept the withdrawal of the application by the applicants.
Second.
Motion by Noem, second by Knoblock. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
We don't have to accept their withdrawal, they just get to do it. All right, so I, we don't need a motion. I think it's just nice to, to have this between these two items, just to present them, but I, I don't think we need to take action here. I don't know that we want to set the precedent of taking action on an administrative withdrawal, personally.
Mr. Bucicconi?
I think once the applicant withdraws their pub, their application, there's nothing before the commission. Mr. Platsner did a great job of letting the public know why.
All right, then we'll consider those two cases withdrawn. Moving on to our next case, we have another request to withdraw the application for planning case twenty-four dash twenty-one, a commercial wireless tower at seven hundred and ninety-third lane northwest, Excel Energy. Mr. Platsner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, so, sounds like the planning commission does not actually need to take action on this, but because public hearing notices were sent out, I do think it's good to at least point out that the application is being withdrawn. And then one, one more note I wanted to make about the previous item, the, if, if the applicant does come forward with an application, again, requiring a public hearing, new public hearing notices will be sent out, so members of the public will be notified of a new public hearing. As far as this request, this is a request for, it was originally a request for a commercial wireless tower on the, at the Excel Energy substation, the Coon Creek substation, south of Highway six-ten. City staff determined that the tower being proposed would not actually fit under the definition of a commercial wireless tower. The tower being proposed is for private communications in between XL substations, so essentially for XL Energy's private use only, which doesn't fit the definition of a commercial tower. Thus, the review of this application would be administrative and would not be covered by the commercial tower application, thus would not require a public hearing or planning commission recommendation or city council approval. And this was a, a recommendation made by the, the city attorney. So just wanted to explain that. It sounds like the planning commission does not need to accept the withdrawal, so it sounds like we can just move on to the next item.
Thank you. Next case is planning case twenty-four dash nineteen, conditional use permit for the Apostolic Church at two-three-nine-three Coon Rapids Boulevard. Mr. Platsner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, so I have before you a request for a conditional use permit for a church on the second story of the building at two-three-nine-three Coon Rapids Boulevard. This is an existing building, existing two-story building in the office zoning district and the commercial mixed-use land use district. A place of worship is considered a conditional use in the office district, so a church would need a conditional use permit in order to be located on a property in the office district. A conditional use permit for a different church was brought for the same location, the second story of this building, and the application was withdrawn before any decision was made, and this was back in 2019. And just to clarify that this request is from a different applicant than the previous 2019 request. It's not the same applicant coming back. So this is a two-story building. Currently, I believe there is, there are office uses on the first floor. The church is proposed to occupy the second floor of the building. And the church would, according to the applicant, include a sanctuary for worship, private counseling areas for individual and small group sessions. There is, there has been building code review of the request to move into the second story of this church, and part of that review concluded that without doing significant renovations, the second story would only be able to hold a maximum of twenty-nine occupants. And that's relevant for this application now because staff used that twenty-nine occupant maximum to determine the maximum number of parking spaces that might be needed on the site. So staff did a parking calculation based on that twenty-nine person maximum. The applicant has told staff that there is not expected to be twenty-nine people in the building or in the second story of the building at one time for any reason, because services are held, multiple different services are held per week, and there aren't even a total of twenty-nine parishioners. But I, I can let the applicant speak to that if there are questions about it. But staff did do the parking calculation based on twenty-nine occupants. For a church use, one parking space is required per four seats. So if there were twenty-nine seats in the church, that would be eight parking spaces required on site. And then for an office use, one parking space would be required per two-hundred square feet. So for an eighteen-hundred square foot, first floor office use, that requires nine spaces. So a total of seventeen spaces are required for the two uses together. There are currently twenty spaces on the site, so staff do think that parking is adequate to allow a place of worship on the second story. This is compounded by the fact that the church hours proposed are Saturdays and Sundays, whereas generally an office use is during the weekdays, so there would be staggered peak parking between the two uses. The applicant is not proposing any exterior changes to the building, so the applicant is only proposing to move into the second story of the building and potentially do some interior renovations that would be covered by building permits. With that, staff do recommend approval of the proposed conditional use permit, and the condition number two is meant to be a catch-all to ensure that the interior remodel of the, of the second story meets all building code requirements, including any occupancy requirements by building code. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Platsner on this case at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Platsner, if my memory serves, the last hang-up on this one was getting the second floor up to ADA because it's only a, a set of stairs up there. And that is a requirement of a building code? Is that correct, or would that fall under that, that second condition?
That would be a requirement of building code, thank you Commissioner, and would fall under that second condition. So that's something that the building inspectors have discussed with the applicant and determined that, based on what the applicant is proposing, up to twenty-nine occupants, though no changes would be needed to meet those ADA requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner, anyone else, questions at this time? Petitioner present, do they have anything they'd like to add?
The petitioner is present today. I'd happy to invite him on to.
Thank you. Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, and tell us anything you'd like to tell us about this application.
Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners, I want to thank you for this opportunity to, having had my application considered in this vice council. I'm Pastor Amma Christopher. I reside at Ramsey. I recently moved from Anoka to Ramsey, and I come from Cameroon. I was actually trained at the Apostolic Theological Seminary in Nigeria. I've been a pastor for more than twenty years. I'm the father of six, three boys, three girls, and they are all here in US with me. The first is working with a company down in St. Paul. The second is a. The second is a Navy officer. The third is graduating from St. Cloud. The fourth will be going to St. Benedict University this November. The fifth will be graduating from Anoka High School, and the sixth is at the Anoka Arts, Middle School Arts. So, I had a vision when I got here, I was a pastor there, and that vision was to make sure those from my community who come to the US, actually, they keep the morals, we teach them back home. They don't get absorbed by those on the streets. So, that was how I started looking for a place where I can use for counseling, a little office. I started in my basement and was counseling them, went down to the Secretary of State and I registered there. So, I didn't have another name that the name of the Apostolic Church, which is a church I worked with, and I know what they teach and what they stand for. So, in order to impact my community, when I saw this building, there are two, there are three rooms inside. One, we are using it for the children. When we come on Sundays, we usually are meeting on Sundays. The other one is my office, and the other room is also an office. So, there's this opening that was there, as he rightly said, that was being used by the former church. So, we decided that on Sunday, I can bring some few parents, so we have like a time of prayers, and then we share the scriptures and we go back home. So, as I know, we don't have up to 20 worshippers. And I'm praying that if Christ carries and the congregation is growing, I will one day come back to this vice commission to ask for space where I can move. So, as I know, we, we are not up to 20 adults. In the last Sunday, we had just about 12 with some few kids, but the bulk of the people, they call on either Zoom or WhatsApp for advice and counseling with matters that pertain to families, divorces, how to raise their children here in the US. So, that is my, our focus, and we don't have any other thing out of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner, have any questions for the petitioner? All right, we may have questions later, but for now, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we need a public hearing on this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing on planning case 24-19, a conditional use permit for the Apostolic Church at 2393 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing, limit comments to the commission. Commissioner.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
I have another question for Planner Patzner. Clarify for me again this ADA business that, that hung up the other proposal from five years ago, but you're saying that can be worked out with the building inspectors?
Commissioner Casey, to be honest, I don't know the details of the 2019 ADA issue. I have had conversations with the building inspectors. They were clarified to me to some extent, but not to the extent where I feel comfortable detailing them to the Planning Commission. My, to the best of my understanding, what's being proposed here would not have the same size of congregation as what was proposed in 2019, and I believe that's the change between now and the 2019 application, where the, the occupancy load of the second story of the building is quite small for a church with, you know, maybe a standard number of parishioners, which would probably bring it to over 29 occupants, whereas what's being proposed here would likely be well under 29 occupants at most times.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Haglo.
I also don't quite get it. Somebody's in a wheelchair or whatever. How are they allowed to access this place?
Commissioner Haglo, once again, this is outside of my area of expertise, but my, my understanding is that it's less about whether someone in a wheelchair would be able to access the space and more about if there were a fire or an emergency, would the number of people in the building at the time be able to exit the building safely? And that's, I think, where the, the 29 person occupant line is being drawn, but I would need to defer to our, our building officials to understand that more deeply. And, and to add to that, I think that that's something that will be caught if there are any issues at building, at the time of building code review, and I don't think it is a requirement that that be fully understood necessarily to, to determine whether a conditional use permit is appropriate, and, and that is the intent of the second condition, that the conditional use permit can be revoked if the building department determines that what's being proposed would, would be detrimental to the public health, essentially, that the users of the building would be in danger if they were using the building as proposed because it's either over the occupancy load or, you know, there are other ADA issues.
So it will have further review?
Correct.
Anyone else? Do we have any motions?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock?
I'll make a motion in planning case 2419 that we approve the proposed conditional use permit with the following conditions: compliance with Title 11 of City Code, and two, to ensure the conditional use is not detrimental to public health, safety, and the general welfare, et cetera.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Motion by Knoblock, second by Casey. Commissioner Smokey.
If I could just request just a simple modification, just make sure that the et cetera is clear, that that pertains to what is in the packet. We're not going to cite that.
Yes, it is. I can read it in, in verbatim.
No need.
Shall meet all applicable building codes and ensure criteria are met for the Building Inspections Division to issue a certificate of occupancy. That's in its completion.
And I will second.
No, you made the initial mo, you made the second, that's correct. Any further discussion? We have the motion and second. Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And that motion carries. This is a decision by the Planning Commission and can be appealed to the city council within 10 business days if someone so chooses. Otherwise, good luck. All right, our next case is planning case 24-20, a PUD amendment for Kleidman Realty Company, 10313 Hanson Boulevard. Mr. Platsner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So I have before you a request for a planned unit development amendment, or PUD amendment. This is for the Wedgewood Apartment Complex, which is zoned office and guided a residential mixed use. However, there is a PUD over the site which allows for a 58-unit residential apartment complex. It is a requirement that for PUD to be amended, that the, their Planning Commission hold a public hearing and make a recommendation that the city council approve the amendment. Because the PUD specifically requires, or specifically allows a 58-unit apartment complex, what's being proposed, does require an amendment, and that is that the applicant wants to increase the unit count at the apartment complex to 59 units, so add a singular unit to the apartment complex. There is a, currently a pool house at the apartment complex where pool equipment is being stored, and the applicant, the owner of the apartment complex, would like to turn that pool house into a 59th unit. Basically, in the planning department review of the proposal, the main issue for allowing another unit to be added to the apartment complex was to ensure that parking at the apartment complex be increased to keep the parking ratio at 2.25 spaces per unit, which is the current parking ratio and the one that the PUD was originally approved for. And just for a little bit of context, the original PUD was approved in 1985. So, the applicant is proposing to add two new parking spaces by taking out a currently unused landscaping island, and adding these two parking spaces would bring the number of parking spaces on site from 131 to 133, which would continue the ratio of 2.25 spaces per unit. Even though the site is not zoned high-density residential, it is zoned office with a planned unit development, staff found it applicable to base its review off of the high-density residential standards, just to ensure that it was in line with other uses at the same density, and this is because the apartment complex would be going from 14.8 units an acre to 15.1 units an acre. Both of these are within the high-density residential range. So, staff found it appropriate that the applicant keep the number of spaces at a ratio of 2.25 spaces per unit, which they are proposing to do by adding those two parking spaces. Otherwise, the remainder of the review of what's being proposed would be by the building department to ensure that the new unit meets residential occupancy standards and building code requirements. The unit is 576 square feet. 70 square feet of those would be retained for pool equipment, pool equipment storage, and have an exterior entrance and exit only, so no one would need to go through the unit in order to access pool equipment. The remaining 506 square feet would be used for a residence. This is over the minimum square footage allowed for a residential unit in the HDR district, so staff find that it's, it's generally appropriate for a development at this density. I'd include some pictures of what the pool house looks like now, and then here is a layout of what the residential unit could look like in the future. So, before they'd be able to start work on that, they would need building permit approval, and before they're able to do that, they would need approval of an amendment to the PUD. So with that, staff are recommending approval of the amendment to the planned unit development, with the conditions that the new unit meet all residential building code requirements in the, as, as imposed by the building department, and add the proposed two parking spaces to the site. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Platsner. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Platsner? All right, hearing done. Is the petitioner present, and would they like to add anything? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm Mike Kukuska with Kleidman Realty Company. We manage the property for the owner, and the idea here is to just make best use of the space. It's originally was set apart as a pool room, as known by Mr. Patzner, for the property. Given that we live in the state of Minnesota, it's used, you know, you can use it for about a week, and then for the rest of the year, it just sits vacant. So, the idea here is to just, best use of that space is to convert it into a studio unit. You know, we knew all along that we'd have to move ahead with additional parking spaces to make that functional, and so that's what we've done with, you know, the idea is to take that two-space island, convert it into parking spaces. Otherwise, that's it. You know, just adding one more unit and hoping that passes the commission, and if you have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions for the petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So are there, there covered garages on the property?
Yeah.
But these two new parking spots won't be, they'll be surface?
That's right.
Okay. How many garages?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure.
58 apartments. I just was curious.
Yeah. It's roughly split between parking and garages, and at this point in time, we don't charge for garages either. That comes with the apartment, so I think with the, and we've had no issues with parking. We actually even have visitor parking on site as well. We have five or six visitor parking spots, and that's functioned well for us.
Just for information, according to our packet, 58 of the 131 existing spaces are enclosed.
That's right.
Anyone else have questions for the petitioner at this time? All right, thank you. We may have more later.
All right, thank you.
All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 24-20, a PUD amendment to Kleidman Realty Company, 10313 Hanson Boulevard. Anyone wish to speak? Anyone wish to speak to the public hearing? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Limit comments, commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
I would move that in planning case 24-20, we approve the amendment to the PUD approved in planning case 85-71 to allow a 59-unit apartment project, subject to the conditions listed in our packet.
Second.
Our motion by Geisler, I'll give the second to Smokey. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. And that motion carries. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission for the decision by the city council at their August 5th meeting. All right, our last case of the evening is planning case 24-18, a commercial wireless tower, temporary and permanent, City of Coon Rapids at 11316 Foley Boulevard Northwest. Mr. Platsner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Members of the Planning Commission, and Public Works Director Tim Hemmer is also here tonight, and he is here to, I believe, answer questions on the project. This is an application brought forward by the city. So I'll go over what's being applied for briefly, but I may end up turning questions over to Public Works Director Hemmer. So, the city does own a water tower at the subject property on Foley Boulevard, near the Northdale Boulevard intersection. There is an existing wireless antenna on the water tower that will need to be removed because the city is planning to decommission and remove that water tower. The city is proposing that during removal, in order to maintain the wireless cellular coverage at the site while the water tower is being removed, that a temporary 150-foot cell tower be erected to the west of the water tower, and that once the water tower removal is complete, that a permanent 150-foot cell tower be built at the site of the former water tower and the temporary tower then be removed. The 150-foot height is proposed to maintain the same height as the existing wireless tower that's on top of the water tower, which is 143 feet. So, the 150-foot tower would be needed for the 143-foot wireless antenna, and this would create no lapse in coverage for users of the wireless service with the removal of the water tower and construction of the tower. So, it's difficult to see here up on your screens, but there is, this is a, a site plan showing where the temporary pole is proposed, which is to the west of the water tower, on the McDonald's site, where the city is working to create a location for it. And this would be in the site of, of what is currently the dumpster enclosures on the McDonald's site. The temporary pole would be removed once the permanent pole is completed, and the permanent pole equipment, which is required to be screened by City Code, is supposed to be surrounded by a six-foot privacy fence and possibly landscaping as well. So, the owner of the antenna did provide some information explaining their need to keep the existing cell tower height at 143 feet. They are also proposing, or there are proposals for, in the future, two additional antenna to be co-located on the 150-foot tower, the permanent tower, at 115 feet and 130 feet respectively. The city is projecting the work on the permanent tower to be completed by the end of the summer of 2025, I believe, so the temporary tower would only need to be up for about one year to just under one year. And then this is just provided by the owner of the antenna, or I'm sorry, by the, this is provided by SEA. is provided by SEH, the company that the city contracts with to review wireless tower applications, to show what the proposed tower would likely look like in place of the water tower on the same site. So, generally, the same height, a little bit skinnier, but these are also pictures of similar 150-foot towers that are, were built in other communities in the Twin Cities, just to provide context. With that, city staff are recommending approval of the proposed temporary and permanent commercial towers. The planning commission would need to make a recommendation after holding a public hearing, and the city council would make a decision on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Platsner. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Platsner? Mr. Hemmer, is there anything you'd like to add?
Chair Schwartz, not at this time. I'm just available to answer any questions anyone may have about the project. It's a complicated, multi-process project that goes hand-in-hand with an existing tower, the new water tower that's being built. It's just trying to maintain existing cellphone coverage in the area and take advantage of a small piece of property that exists there. And I don't know how a tower was ever built on a tenth of an acre, but it was, and there's really not a whole lot more this site can be used for, and we have existing facilities on it, and we believe it's the best use to allow those to continue to happen and provide the coverage for the folks in that area.
So, do you know, will the, will McDonald's still be able to use their trash enclosure or not?
Chair Schwartz, their trash is currently in the building, just to the southwest of that. That's an old trash enclosure that they don't use anymore. Their trash is currently inside the building to the southwest. They were going to demolish that anyway, and we just told them if we were able to work this project through, we would take care of that for them.
All right, and then one final question, if I may. I've seen around the cities cell towers that have all the components interior, inside the pole itself. Is there any reason why we aren't using a setup such as that?
Chair Schwartz, I'm not familiar about how you can get, I could certainly see the wiring and the cabling going inside, but usually on, there's an existing ground building at this site right now. It's, you know, it's a large shed, like you would have in your backyard where all their equipment belongs. Absent doing some sort of a very large base tower that maybe peaks, I'm not sure how you'd be able to get three users potentially inside. We consider doing that, and as a matter of fact, inside the new tower that's being constructed down on Coon Rapids Boulevard and Foley. The diameter on that tank is, you know, 150 feet across, and that will house units inside. But this is just a typical monopole. It's, I'm not sure the dimensions of it at the base, but you'd have to go pretty wide to try to get everything up inside there. Then, your costs probably increase, and it may not be economically feasible at that point to try to construct such a thing. And it probably is going to look much like the tower that's there today and be a much larger structure.
I don't know how many antennas are on it, but there's such of a monopole on 610 over in Brooklyn Park, as you had west on 610. On the, I guess it would be the south side, yeah, the south side of the highway. I don't know how many antennas are in it.
I can certainly look at what that is and how it is constructed and see how that compares to what we have here or what's being proposed, and if that's even a feasible option for us. I could look into that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
Question for Mr. Hemmer or Mr. Platsner, either one. In the recommendation for the approval, the conditions include the sufficient landscaping to screen the ground equipment from public view or an opaque fence to serve the same purpose. Is that going to be for the temporary as well? I just want to make sure it's worded properly in the conditions. If it's not a requirement to have that landscaping, I just don't know if there is a clarification there.
Commissioner Smokey, I guess I'll defer to Max on whether that's required on the temporary. I will say that the ground equipment that's there today is the ground equipment that's going to be there under the temporary. That's one of the benefits of keeping the tower where it is, is number one, you don't need another FCC permit in order to get that. You have to stay within, I believe it's 150 feet of that, otherwise, everything starts all over again. And for that user, they don't want to, it's an additional cost to move a bit. So, keeping their facility exactly, it's that kind of a rocky exterior building, that's not going anywhere, that's going to stay there, that's the only thing that's going to be on that site as part of the temporary facility.
Okay. Perfect.
Mr. Smokey, I believe, Public Works Director Hemmer probably answered the question.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. On the screening, Mr. Hemmer, as far as the opaque fence, I guess, will the city be considering sightlines of driveway aisles out of Foley and things like that? It's, as you mentioned, it's a very small parcel right next to the road, so making sure that we don't overscreen for people exiting out of that driveway there. Is that for the permanent structure, thinking more that, not the temporary?
Yes. Commissioner Geisler, we had a similar conversation when we were getting approvals for the new tower, and we thought, well, let's add some bushes, let's add, and I'm thinking, well, we've got this structure 150 feet in the air, how do you screen something like that? And so, as we went through this, I said, I'm really open to what options you have. To me, I think a fence probably does it best. Certainly, we would keep that out of any site triangle that's there. You know, I'm willing to do what's necessary from a screening standpoint for that ground equipment, knowing that you're not going to be able to screen the whole thing, but I just wanted to be flexible in what your desires and requests were and whatever is allowed and required by our ordinances.
Sure. And the existing site has no screening at all, right? And we don't even have the chain-link fence like we do around some of the other water towers in the city. So, okay, yeah, I was just curious to see what we were thinking about that. My main concern would be just making sure that site triangles are clear, and whether that's an evergreen or a fence or something outside 601, it's going to be a building equipment, and it is what it is. And yes, you can't hide a 150-foot pole behind a tree.
Any other questions, Commissioner, at this time? All right, we need a public hearing on this matter. So, at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 24-18, a commercial wireless tower, temporary and permanent, for the City of Coon Rapids at 11316 Foley Boulevard Northwest. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Please come to the microphone, give your name and address for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes, please.
My English not good, and my son translates.
Our house is the house nearest to the water tower.
Can we get your name, please, for the record?
My name, Alyssa Murza. My son's name, Fedor Murza.
Maybe spell those for the secretary.
Last name, Murza. M-U-R-Z-A.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, our house is based off right next to the current water tower. Our backyard is, so behind of the water tower, in front of the water tower, is the commercial property, and right behind it is our yard.
And we didn't want that cell tower to be right next to our house.
Because this area where the tower will be is really close to our house and our yard.
Why this worries me? For four years, since they put the new antennas on to the water tower. Not only in our family, but also our neighbor's family, illnesses start to happen. Just in the last three years, three of our family members start to have issues with their thyroid gland. Majority of our trees on our yard have died and dried out. Even our dog has got ill and died. On the basis of this, I would like to ask you to reconsider the placement of the location of the current, of the cell tower that will be built into a different location. Because I'm worried for my family, and I do not want to move anywhere else. But the circumstances that happened to our family kind of causing me to not worry. You may not believe what we are saying, but we personally are experiencing this, and we are really worried. Other neighbors' children are also suffering, I can't speak for them, but they also said that their child has had thyroid problems as well, as of recent years. So, if possible, move this house outside of the neighborhood.
That's why my ask is, if there's any opportunity or chance to just look for another, relocate to another area where it is not residential, that would be really wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the public hearing? Come to the microphone, please.
Chair, Commissioners, so since the 5G has been installed.
Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Alexander Murza, and I live in the same household as my family. I have noticed that since the 5G was installed on the water tower, our house has been having very horrible phone connection, and we've tried to contact our provider about it, and they said that there shouldn't be any problems, that everything should be good, and that it could be possible because we are located so close to the water tower, to those antennas, that the service is kind of bugging over there. And I've spoken to others who live close to these kind of towers, and some of them have confirmed that indeed that often happens. And also, I have seen a impact on both our garden, our trees, as was mentioned. After the installation of those antennas, we've seen a decrease in the health of it, and, you know, unfortunately, sort of like death for them. And I just want to request, if possible, for consideration of a different area to put up this cellular tower just farther away from residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to public hearing? Seeing none, close the public hearing, limit comments to the commission. Mr. Hemmer, is there just one, or is there more than one carrier on that tower, on the water tower at this time?
Chair Schwartz, currently, there is one user. The city has had up to three on that, on the tower that exists there today, and there's currently one. Sprint is disbanded, and they're gone, so we, I can't recall if there is a 911 emergency radio up there as well. I can't recall if that's up. I apologize for that. But currently, there's one telecom provider on the site.
Thank you. Commissioner. Commissioner Casey.
It was good to hear the comments from the public. I don't feel like I have any expertise in analyzing that kind of story or comment. I don't know what to say about that. I don't think that's part of our process when I read the recommendation. It's, I'm in limbo, kind of.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
I'll echo that. I guess I'm not quite sure how to address this, I, at face value. You know, the request is to put a proposed, or as a temporary, tower in place of something that currently exists to serve the same purpose on face value of what's being asked of us. I don't have any reason to reject it, but I don't know if there is some other consideration that should be given before we make the recommended, the recommendation.
Chair Schwartz. Commissioner Navalik.
I'd like to provide the perspective. Our purpose and role is in reviewing planning proposals, but also, there is outer lying area that I see is public safety. When there's essential, there's an impact to traffic patterns, and there's increased risk to our public citizens. We also do reviews in regards to Coon Rapids, or Coon Creek Rapids watershed, in regards to water quality. This is a gray area, but I, my, in my opinion, I'm not asserting anything, I'm not a medical practitioner, but when you, when there's some, like a smoking gun or some evidence, it's just, it begs the question that there is a concern here, whether it's merited or not merited, that it needs further investigation. And I think maybe that's something in our purview that, you know, if we care about water and we care about public safety, health is part of that aspect, too. Maybe that is part of the planning, planning department, if it's reasonable that that be considered part of it. It's kind of making an assumption, you know, with how prevalent wireless coverage is in our society and our lives nowadays, but I would say it's worth a look to see if there is something there in regards to, I'm just trying to put myself in my fellow citizens, if my plants are dying, if my trees are dying, if there's too many similar situations where neighbors or people, their health is affected, I would like to know, is it, is the health of my neighbors and my community being affected? And I don't know if it's the wireless, but I'd like to ask the question and look into it a little bit. So, I think it's a reasonable request, in my view, that we add that kind of criteria as something to look into. That's all I'm trying to, not making a proposal, just kind of thinking it's something we should consider.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
So, I guess the question to staff is, is there information that you guys can provide us to help us in, in confidently making a proposal? And I'm not saying here tonight, but I mean, is it something that, this could be postponed so that at least we can get information around? Have there been any studies? Have there been any complaints elsewhere? We know that these towers exist all over, so I've not heard anything in the media suggesting any public health safety from the towers. I'll, you know, echo Commissioner Casey to say that it's, I'm just not educated enough to be able to just vote on this without some consideration. That's how I feel. I'm not sure.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mr. Platsner.
The city code, the way that it regulates commercial towers, wireless towers, it does take into account the safety of nearby residents in the sense that there are requirements around the towers being constructed such that they do not fall in a storm, such that it would damage nearby properties. But to my knowledge, there aren't any considerations in code about other effects of wireless towers that may exist. I'm personally not an expert, and I don't have, you know, any insight on... on the, you know, potential medical effects of wireless towers. However, it is my belief that the way that the planning department, the, you know, way that the planning department would handle this sort of thing would be to make changes to the zoning code to take that into account if that were necessary or something that were recommended. However, in looking at this project right now, we do have to take the zoning code as it is. And the, you know, areas of the zoning code that take this into account, it's not really looking at this kind of issue. It's not really looking at the medical side of things, really just the structural side of things. And I believe that that's the, you know, the merit that we have to judge, or that the commission needs to judge the proposal on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
And I guess just the one follow-up question then. Is there any recommendations or anything that we can give the public in terms of what course of action they can take to at least get their questions answered, maybe? Since it's outside the purview of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Smokey. To be honest, I don't know off the top of my head what I would recommend in dealing with this sort of issue. I might defer to Public Works Director Hemmer to see if he has any ideas.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, I'm more than happy to work with this family here. I just did a quick Google search. It's the same conversation that came up when we were changing the radio read water meters in people's homes. You're holding the cellphone in your hand when you're making that call, and it has the same signals that are happening. So you do a quick Google search, and you'll find studies that say it's the worst thing ever and others that say it's completely harmless. And I certainly am not an expert in what that is. You know, I'm looking at a government technology and cybersecurity, and what it's stating here is it's really the FCC that kind of regulates this. It's not a local thing. The FCC studies this. They decide on what frequencies they believe are safe. They issue those frequencies to those users. It's more prevalent in everything we had. As I said, water meters, gas meters. Everything is going kind of that digital age, and it's going to, there's going to be more of it. I couldn't tell you, is this 100% safe? Would I live underneath this? Me personally, I would say that they're probably there. I'm not trying to minimize anybody's concerns at all. I'm more than happy to work with these folks or anybody else on finding the research, doing some as well. I don't know what this does to your thoughts, and I certainly feel that and I understand that. I'm not familiar with their property. I don't know if their trees are ash trees. Maybe that's part of it. I don't, we've been in a drought for a while. I know this year, things have sprung back a little bit. I'm not trying to deflect or minimize that in any way. I'm more than happy to work with them to try to figure out what it is. I don't know that it's going to solve their concerns or make them feel better about it. Again, a simple Google search I just did, you can find more information than you probably ever want to know about it, but it's very conflicting, like a whole lot of other things that are out there.
Thank you, Mr. Hemmer. Commission, any other comments, thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, no.
Let's say just based on kind of the conversation Mr. Hemmer had and kind of the criterion that Mr. Platsner has laid forth, that I would recommend in Planning Commission Case 24-18 that we approve those temporary and permanent commercial towers with the following conditions. All city structural requirements to be met for both towers, including that towers be designed so that collapse will be confined to the subject property if applicable. Sufficient landscape to screen the ground equipment from the public view or opaque fence to serve the same purpose be shown in the site plan as determined by city staff.
Second. Motion by no, second by Heiko La. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that's a recommendation by the Planning Commission. Decision will be made by the city council at their August 5th meeting. Thank you. And moving on to other business. Mr. Platsner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm going to very briefly go over what we have in store for the August meeting. Family Promise have brought forth their Phase 1 application. And to be clear, Phase 1 is the only phase that they actually have plans to go forward with at this time. So this really is the application for Family Promise, and that's an eight-unit multifamily residential building that they're proposing on 94th Avenue near the Family Promise office, just north of Coon Rapids Boulevard. Tronsen Reserve has also brought back an application, this time with four more units being proposed for 1354 121st Avenue. It's very similar to what was approved back in 2022. However, that approval has lapsed, and so they're bringing back a slightly modified proposal for the Tronsen Reserve Townhome Project. And that's, I believe, I can't remember the number of townhomes off the top of my head, but we will discuss that in August. And then Alloy Wheel Repair has brought forth a request for a conditional use permit for a auto repair business at 2423 Coon Rapids Boulevard. And we'll discuss the details of that at the August meeting, but that's what's coming up, and that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commission, anyone have anything for other business?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Casey. All in favor?
Aye.